I believe we can.
Okay, well, this meeting will come to order. First meeting of 2001. That was a piece of cake. First thing we'll do is the Pledge of Allegiance and then after that I'll ask for a moment of silence for Jerry Ralph and then we'll swing into the next.
We need to lead. We need to do the oaths first.
Yeah. Yeah, if you're not here, please tell Randy.
No, no, the oath administered by Judge Ingleton.
Oh, you do that first, very first?
Yeah.
Uh-uh, it's not on my list, okay. Take it away, Judge.
Good morning, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
All right, as I understand it, we have three commissioners that need to be sworn in today. Would you like to do this individually or as a group?
As a group.
Let's have, all right, so I have Joseph Persky, Jeff Mergan, and Lee Lenzmeyer. If you'd all please raise your right hand to be sworn. And then I'll have you repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Lee Lenzmeyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Well, let's do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Stearns County Commissioner, District Number.
Of the Office of Stearns County Commissioner, District Four.
District Two.
In the county of Stearns, Minnesota.
The county of Stearns, Minnesota.
According to law and to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to law and the best of my ability and understanding.
Thank you, congratulations.
Uh, thank you, I think.
Thank you, and we'll get you to sign those oaths here, so.
Sounds good, I'll be looking for them, have a good day.
Thank you, all right. All right, uh, then, uh, let's see, we got roll call then. And the roll call obviously show we're all here, unless, if you're not here, let us know. Pledge of Allegiance will be next. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and.
Okay, uh, now would it be appropriate to have a moment of silence for Jerry Ralph?
Sure.
Thank you, folks, technically, well, uh, I think Terrell would know this before anybody. Technically, until, what is it, today, uh, the new legislators are sworn in, is that, is that how it works?
Yep, we actually been without somebody very briefly.
Okay, well, before Jerry Ralph, the last person, uh, to pass on while they were officially in office is Don Adi. That I know about, you know, might have been someone else. Okay, the, uh, next thing then would be the organization for 2021. That would be the election of Chair and Vice Chair. And Terrell would be, uh, Chair and Vice Chair would be Steve. Can we do that in, uh, one motion?
Say, say, Lee, I, I think I'll, I'll kind of handle that.
Oh, is that your job? Okay.
So first we'll take nominations for the Chair of the Stearns County Board of Commissioners.
Randy, I'd like to nominate Terrell Clark.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Somebody like to make a motion for Terrell Clark being Chair?
So, Steve.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor of Terrell Clark being Chair of the Stearns County Board of Commissioners, say aye.
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 Opposed? Then next I'll do nominations for Vice Chair. Do you have any nominations?
I'll nominate Steve Notch, Jeff Mergan.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll second that motion.
Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Steve Notch as Vice Chair of the Stearns County Board of Commissioners, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, congratulations, Terrell and Steve, and, Terrell, this is your meeting. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, do have one more technical difficulty. I seem to be not having my agenda after we had it on here, so that makes it a little trickier. So our first, um, yeah, I can't figure out what happened to it. Oh, thank you, perfect, this will be perfect.
Terrell, Terrell, a little, a little trick, uh, is, uh, I always printed out a hard copy of the agenda so I could use the other screens.
Absolutely, I actually usually have had no trouble until today. Now we're having lots of trouble.
Flipping back and forth drove me nuts, so.
Oh, yeah, I.
Among the enlisted things.
Talk more about that later. Okay, so we now are, um, at the approval of the agenda, I believe there's a couple of things that might need to be removed. Mike, can you tell us what those are?
I can, um, Madam Chair, under the Environmental Services Number H5, the solid waste cleanup of, uh, property on River Oaks Lane. That property was inspected yesterday and, um, met all the requirements for cleanup, so there's no need for action there. So we can pull that from the agenda completely and then, um, there are Human Services, we'd like to just do a quick update from Public Health and Environmental Services about how we're doing with vaccinations for the, you know, the tier one people that were required to, or that we've taken on for getting vaccinated.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there any other changes anybody'd like to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. With those two changes, eliminate, um, number five under Environmental Services and adding COVID vaccine update.
Persky, so move.
Remove the agenda.
Okay, great, we have a motion and a second, we're gonna quickly do the roll call, District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five. District One, aye. Okay, public access forum, I believe that we do, uh, Mike, do we have anybody who's asked?
We do not.
Okay, um, just for the purposes of anybody listening, so they know for the future, anyone wishing to address the board on issues not found on the board's agenda may do so in person during the peacetime emergency. Those wishing to address the board on issues not found on today's agenda may send a written correspondence to the county administrator in lieu of being heard in person. The board will be presented with the written request. Board members will not engage in dialogue about the issue, but rather refer the matter to the appropriate county department with an expectation that a report will follow. A citizen may be heard at the public access forum only once per month. So for anybody listening, if you're interested for the next meeting, please contact, um, our Administrator, Senator Mike Williams. Okay, consent agenda. Is there anything on here anybody to talk about or remove?
Uh, Jeff Mergan, I would like to poll number eight. And then, and I have some questions on number six and thirteen.
Okay, um, would you like to ask those questions now, Jeff, or do you want to poll them?
I could ask it now.
Okay.
Number, number six, it says, uh, that no more than twenty percent of the, uh, tax forfeited proceeds would go to the county parks. Okay, so where would this money go if it was less than twenty percent is my question? Would it go into the general fund or where would that money go?
Okay, so the, the distribution of tax forfeit proceeds go by, first we pay the expenses off, so if we have to demo a house or any expenses related to, um, the tax forfeiture process, we pay those off. And then we pay the special assessments off for the jurisdictions that, that they have certified. And then after that, um, the twenty percent would kick in if there's much left, which a lot of times there's not. Um, then after that, it gets distributed back to the jurisdictions based on their percent of their tax levy. So this is just kind of stepping in before that final distribution.
Okay, so if that was only ten percent, then the other ten percent would go back to the jurisdictions, is what you're saying?
Yeah, you know, we, we've always done twenty percent and twenty percent is what a lot is in the statute. Can you change that amount? I guess I'm not sure on that. I suppose I don't know that you can.
Maximum. Question, I think it's something we should look at as to where that money would go if it wasn't at that maximum amount.
Yeah, this is a regular pecking order, as I remember, and in fact, we've had some opportunities, uh, maybe back in Flintstone days, but, uh, situations where, uh, we have done smaller projects in individual townships, but we had sort of a, uh, I don't know, bidding process, we had some sort of a process where townships let us know if they had a, uh, a project in mind, and we've done some little ones, but yeah, we can review that.
Randy, Joe Persky here, say what, when it goes back to the municipalities, uh, does that go back to the general fund or does it go to a specific fund?
It, it gets distributed just like, uh, the tax would have been would get distributed. And, and I'll just mention, as far as municipalities, where they're getting their benefit is getting the special assessments paid off, and that's, that comes to be before this, and that's really their biggest concern and the biggest amount get paid out of. So typically, you know, we take out our expenses and then the special assessments get paid off, and really after those two items, there's normally not a lot left, um, and I can show you some of those numbers, I guess, for past years. And, and our inventory of tax forfeited properties is coming down, so, you know, if, if you'd like me to come back and give you a little more detail, I can do that. This is something we've done every year to help, to help find the Parks Department a little bit more.
It sounds like from an education standpoint, that would be helpful. Um, are you, are members okay with proceeding with it on the consent agenda as it is now and then getting information and perhaps looking at that for the future, or do you want to do something different?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to know what would happen to that money if, if it wasn't sent to the parks.
So Jeff, does that mean you want to hold off on voting on this, or do you, are you okay with doing it now and plus looking at it? Because I agree, I'd like to look at it as well.
I, I'd appreciate holding off voting on this one.
Okay, Randy, is that okay? Mike, can we wait until the next meeting?
Sure, I could do that, yep.
Okay, so, um, it sounds like we're gonna pull that one so we can get some more information and we'll revisit it, um, when you all bring that back to us. And then you said you had, um, a question, number thirteen.
Number thirteen, aerial photography, how often do we do that? Do we do that every year?
Yeah, that's not my item anymore, but it used to be. I, it's about every three or four years.
Okay, and it's okay, that was my question.
I think we did it last. Due to multiple departments.
Jeff, I had, Commissioner Persky here, I, I had concerns about that as well, a number of years ago, because I know that's a rather pricey item. And I'm just wondering about the frequency on that. I guess I would not consider doing it maybe any more frequent than every third year if possible.
Commissioners, that, that is what we, what we do, is it typically every three years, and that is the last time we did it, was three years ago.
Okay, thank you, that was my question.
Great, great, okay, did anybody else have any other items they had questions or wanted to remove?
Yep.
Steve?
Yeah, Commissioner Clark, if we're doing eight, let's maybe throw nine and two. I don't know if Jeff wants to, if we want, this guy, now, or if you want to move him to Environmental Services.
You know, we, let's, let's move him to Environmental Service, if everybody's okay with that, eight and nine. Okay, so could we have a motion for the approving the consent agenda with the exception of items six, eight, and nine? Six will take up at a later date, eight and nine will do under Environmental Services.
So move.
Okay, Commissioner Lenzmeyer? Jeff, thank you. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye, District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five.
Aye.
District One, aye, okay. All right, we are now gonna recess our regular meeting to conduct the Human Services Board meeting. I believe Melissa's on here and Erin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Melissa Huberty, the Human Services Administrator. Um, there's only two items on the consent agenda for today, and then after Erin Tufti, the Emergency Manager, and I, we'll do a brief vaccine update. The first item on the Human Services Consent Agenda is F1 on page 109 and is the RFP Schedule for Human Services for 2021. And just to inform the board, I'm bringing forward our proposed, um, RFP schedule each January on an annual basis, so you know which contracts we're posting for that year. The second item is F2 on page 110, and it's a contract for 180 degrees, and I'm available for questions should you have them.
How was the consent with a question?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Well, I don't know if you want a second or if I should ask it now? Just that.
I got technologically distracted for a second, let's get a second and then let's ask the question.
I'll second it, Lee Lenzmeyer.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Steve.
Yeah, Melissa, just, well, maybe this is for Mike, um, I believe you mentioned in one of your, uh, emails, you know, from the Administrator, um, you're reviewing some of these organizations, is that correct?
Madam Chair.
But that's true.
Melissa, Mike?
Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, Madam Chair, um, Commissioners, yes, that is correct, we are doing that.
Okay, thank you, I just, because, you know, I'd seen it in previous email, just wanted to touch on that. Which I think it's a good idea that, you know, the county does that periodically, so thank you.
And is that something you'll update us on as we go through the year then?
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioners, yes, I can do that, um, as you, as you like.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, uh, let's go ahead and vote, seeing we have a motion and a second, District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five.
Aye.
District One, aye. All right, Ms. Tufti.
Good morning, Commissioners, Erin Tufti, um, Stearns County Emergency Manager. Um, Melissa and I do have just a couple of slides we'd like to share with you, um, to give you an update about the current status of the vaccination programs we're working on. Melissa, while I bring this up, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to start us out with?
Nope, go right ahead, Erin, we can answer questions afterwards, I think.
All right, sounds good, are you able to see the presentation?
Yes.
All right, very good. Um, so we began vaccinating yesterday, um, in Stearns County. We received a shipment from, um, the Minnesota Department of Health, um, for Moderna vaccine. In Group 1A, which is where we are currently at, um, in Minnesota, um, the groups that are eligible for vaccine are people who are working in healthcare settings, who have the highest risk for exposure to COVID-19. Um, in Stearns County, those efforts are being coordinated by Centricare. Additionally, residents and people who work in long-term care, including assisted living, are also eligible for vaccine. On here you'll note that we have multiple options for vaccine administration. Some of these facilities are Centricare owned, and so Centricare is coordinating that effort. Some of them are part of a, um, partnership with pharmacies, so CES and Walgreens are helping with that administration. Some have the capacity to do it independently, um, and we are helping to facilitate that process for some as well. So lots of different things when it comes to long-term care specifically. Um, and then lastly, where we have the most direct responsibility is working with our public safety first responders to include police, fire, and EMS ambulance services. Um, we have Stearns County personnel specifically working to vaccinate police and fire personnel who expressed interest in receiving the vaccine. And Centricare is working with all of our EMS services throughout the county. This may look familiar, as we have had some of this communication through, um, HR as well. We are in this first phase that is a three-tier approach, um, to the vaccine distribution. As said, 1A is that healthcare personnel, long-term care residents. Um, 1B, the next one that we will move into will be adults who are age sixty-five plus, as well as additional frontline essential workers. And then we'll move into 1C, which will be individuals age sixty-five to seventy-four, those that are sixteen to sixty-four with complex medical situations and other essential workers. Um, we anticipate then, as we move through these groups, we will be getting to the general public later this, um, year, maybe perhaps the summer and into the fall months. Um, just lastly, um, we want to introduce the strike team approach that Stearns County has taken. Um, in a collaborative effort with county departments, we have assembled eleven strike teams. Those strike teams are comprised of four members each, someone doing registration, someone doing education, the actual vaccination, and then outreach, um, to be able to schedule the next appointment and to be able to help with any additional information that individuals may need. Certainly brief with our slides this morning, um, but wanted to be able to provide you that update of where things are at, um, as we are now entering day two, um, of being able to provide those vaccinations to public safety.
Thank you, it's, and we can see through, through the St. Cloud Times and some of the other media that Centricare started even last week, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I've been getting questions, particularly from some of our older residents. Any questions?
Madam Chair, uh, Erin. Of course, uh, we, we've got the schools that are wanting to start up here at this time, are, is there gonna be any priority for classroom teachers? I know keeping them in the classroom is difficult with the, uh, shortage of substitutes, and so that's close schools down, are, are the teachers gonna get any priorities?
Um, we have been given some indication that that next group, that 1B, when we talk about essential workers, that teachers will be part of that, um, portion. Um, we are hoping in the next week or two to hear from the Department of Health as to who will fit into those next categories of 1B. Um, but as for now, we are under the understanding that teachers would be part of it.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, in a conversation I had with the Minnesota Department of Health yesterday, um, my understanding is there's an open comments period during these days that we're in right now to get feedback from the community about who should be next, and I would assume that teachers are gonna be pretty high on that list. We should know within the next week or so, is what I was informed yesterday.
Melissa, did they say anything about retired teachers?
Good point.
Well, um, actually, if you're over seventy-five years old, yes.
Sorry, Joe. Okay, thanks, appreciate you doing that, and it's good to hear our first responders are, um, gonna be receiving that quickly, they've really been putting literally their neck out for us, so.
Yes, and if, um, Madam Chair, Commissioners, if I can just make one last comment, we did start with our first strike team yesterday, and my understanding from that team is that it went really well, and I can't thank the nurses and the support staff around them enough for coming to the plate and doing this. They're really doing a remarkable job already on day one, and a lot of planning went into it, so it's really good that we're, we're implementing now, so that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if, if there's no, no other questions or comments, um, we, thank you, thank you both, and please thank your teams, um, as usual, I mean, we're, we're all very appreciative. Um, and we will now close the Human Services Board and we will reconvene our regular county board meeting, um, and we're gonna move to our public hearing. Got, I'm assuming Shelley and Angie and, okay, good. So our public hearing is considering the conditional use permit application submitted by, uh, MN FCSG 29 on behalf of Howard and Penny Coverts, Eden Valley. Shelley?
Madam Chair, um, what we'd like to do is go through that first item, and Angie Berg is on the line, well, as, um, the other staff that worked with this, and there are staff, Chuck Beisner as well as on the line, so.
Right, so we'll, we'll get the staff information and then move to the public hearing portion.
Yep. Angie, you're muted. Nope, we still can't hear you. We have to take the headset off? And unplug it?
Okay, can we give this a try?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this item is a public hearing that was from a planning commission, public hearing that was held on November nineteenth. Uh, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for the application to consider a one-megawatt solar garden in A-40 Verney District. The property is located in Section 34 of Eden Lake Township. The Planning Commission voted on a five-to-one vote to recommend denial to the board. The findings of fact are listed on packet page one thirteen and one fourteen. We did not receive any additional correspondence for today other than from the applicant, who I believe is on the call. So at this point, Madam Chair, Commissioners, we would look for you to schedule, to hold the public hearing and either concur with the Planning Commission to deny or look to approve the conditional use permit and then ask the department to bring back findings at a later time.
Okay, thank you, Angie. Members, uh, proceed to the public hearing unless you want to ask anything before. Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public.
Good morning, Chair and members of our commissions, this is Chuck Beisner, hopefully you can hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Beisner.
Excellent, I appreciate you taking the time to hear this item. The staff report is excellent and goes into all the detail, and you're gonna answer questions and just, and lay out our case, we, as developers, look for properties that meet the ordinance or solar development, and we spend a lot of time in doing so and spend a lot of money getting a project put together. This particular one meets all of the items of the ordinance, and we have agreed to all the conditions that had been set out from staff. And really I'm unsure, I guess I have a few ideas why it was denied, but based on the merits of the application, we believe it should be approved, as it does meet all the conditions, or meets all the statutes of the ordinance, we agreeable with all the conditions, um, it's an excellent site, it's small in nature, so it's really not taking away from farming, because it's only got about ten acres left that's available to farm, and anybody that's farming knows it's hard to even turn around equipment there, so it's really a piece of property that works perfect for a, a solar garden. I know you have the packet and have read it and maybe have listened to all the. I know you have the packet and have read it and maybe have listened to all the meetings on solar, but I still believe this is an excellent site. And as I stated before, meets all the conditions of the ordinance. And here to really answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beisner. Any questions from board members? Mr. Beisner? Thank you. Shelley, do we have anybody else who wanted to speak today?
There is no one else that I'm aware of that wants to speak to this issue.
Okay.
This is the second solar garden on this property, right?
That's correct.
And the other one was first, the one was approved in just May?
That's my understanding, yes.
So Commissioner Mergen, let's close the public hearing and then let's go to conversation. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Seeing no one else wanting to speak at the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing. Jeff, did you have some other questions with this?
Well, again, it looks like it's, they're both staying under that magic 1-megawatt number. And they're adding one after another here. And I guess I'm going to probably have to go along with the planning commission on this one.
Carol, Mr. Persky here. Can we have the status of the first, the first one? Do we, do we know if the first one is in, is going to be built or what the status of that one might be?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, the, the, the May 2020 solar garden was issued by the planning commission, county board, and has not been constructed. You could ask Mr. Beisner what their construction schedule is if you would like that specific information.
Yes, please, if he's available.
Yes, I am, and it is scheduled to be constructed this spring. The May 2020 probably constructed this string in spring. My only question or concern is, nothing in the ordinance states that you can't have two solar gardens on one parcel. And what would be the difference if this solar garden was on the parcel directly north of the May 2020?
Ms. Berg, or Ms. Benson, can you, my recollection is we've approved more than one on properties in the past. Could you speak to that? And I think there was also a question about the LISA score. I'm not sure how that relates for the whole property. I'm, that appeared to be something that was a factor.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
I can comment on that. So related to your first question, this is the, or would be the fourth solar garden that the county board has considered where there would have been more than one 1-megawatt solar farm on the property. As for the LISA score, that was also brought up by the planning commission as a concern. And they, as you, as the board knows, had, they had thought about that at our special meeting with the county board and planning commission in terms of concern with impact on agricultural areas.
But I was wondering about specifically for this area versus the whole property.
So you are looking for what the LISA score was for this specific property?
Nope, for this part of this site. Because let's, as we've talked about a number of times, there have, there's parts of properties that are more suitable for farming than other parts. At times.
I can pull that up.
And I recognize, I do want to say, I recognize that should the solar be removed, it could go back to its natural state and it could be used for farming again. Not entirely sure how relevant that question is. I just know that was something that. One other question I have, we were talking about animals, landowner wanting to add animals. That is not something that we would, we would generally be coming back to unless we have a different number, right? I mean, there's a number of permitted uses that an owner can, without us, say, well, not so sure we want some more.
Correct. That's correct.
Commissioner.
Yeah. Commissioner Clark, there are uses where intensification can occur. It depends on what those uses are. But as you have indicated, similar in an ag area, animal agriculture is one of those where you can have a certain number of animals and then do an increase in those animals, and that doesn't have to come back for additional approvals. I guess it just depends on where you're located and kind of the circumstances. So clearly, the use of property as solar, we don't currently regulate the number of 1-megawatt on a property. And as you, we've said, that we did have several of these previously, so.
Other questions for staff? Otherwise, we're going to do the motion, one way or the other.
Madam Chair, I did find the answer to your question. So in this particular property, we only did the LISA score on the entire property, which was approximately 40 acres. And this is, this one was right in that time when we had started doing them both. And we did not do it for today's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can just add a little bit?
Yes, Commissioner Notch.
Okay, you know, and I understand too, like going through the planning commission's finding of fact, you know, if you look, C and D, you know, kind of work against each other. You know, one says, well, you know, it's not compatible because of the LISA score. And the other one says that, you know, it is compatible. Sometimes I'm not sure if we get caught up maybe too much on the LISA score on these just for the mere fact that it's not like you're going to create an industrial park where that land probably isn't going to go back too quickly or too soon. I mean, yeah, you can say 25 years is a long time. But, you know, it's an easier option to convert back to an ag use. Plus, I think one of the biggest things for me is, if it's a, if there's no neighbors that, you know, objected to it, plus you're putting it in a beneficial habitat, which hopefully, you know, if the ground was wore down, maybe after 20, 25 years, if they vacate it and take it out, you know, it might be a nice farmable field, or it might just stay in a conservation reserve type program and, and maintain a wildlife nature. But, you know, I, I guess, I'm thinking, the more I see these come up, I'm almost thinking, are we, are we overemphasizing the LISA score on a use that's easily converted back to an ag purpose? I'm not sure. I guess that's just my opinion.
That's, that's a good point. Do you have a motion to make, Steve?
I, I guess I would, you know, I guess going in the past, I was kind of, yeah, okay, they're doing two on one site, but, you know, that's really immaterial on the tax situation. So I guess I'd be, I'd be willing to make a motion to allow this second solar facility on this property.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? I'll make the second just to keep the conversation going.
This is Jeff.
Yep.
We don't know, we don't know the outcome of reverting these back to farming yet. Look what's starting to happen with the windmills. We're starting to see the consequences there with the burying of the blades and everything else. And we, we don't know what the outcome of these are going to be yet, what the recycle value is of the, of the panels themselves, if they need to be replaced, and what's going to happen to them. So I, I'm worried about that a little bit, too.
Sure, and Commissioner, and that's obviously a separate issue from reversion of the land, what, what the quality of the land underneath the panels are. I know it's been brought up, a concern, at least by, by one person about that. That certainly has not impacted decisions in other kinds of development or buildings. I, I've been wondering too about the interpretation, like as Commissioner Notch was talking about, Steve, with, you know, the, the order, what, what our plan, the, oh, it doesn't meet our plan in this case, and it does meet our plan in that case. It seems that with, our, our goal in the plan was to permit some diversification with what agricultural landowners were able to do. And this does fit within that. Is, I don't know if there's a comment about that because it seems like there's maybe been a misinterpretation of that perhaps in the planning commission.
Commissioner Persky here, Madam Chair. I want to comment back to something Commissioner Mergen had mentioned. And that is the, the fact that we're seeing these 1-megs continue to pop up. And that's, you know, because they can avoid the production tax. And also, we do not have the property tax as the, as these become solar gardens. Because solar gardens, I feel, are much different than, than ag, and they're much different than, than wetlands when we put them on wetlands. And, and we're not necessarily getting the adequate amount of tax dollars in return for the placement of, of these. Whereas, you know, property owners that have ag and property owners that have wetlands are paying the same as these that are in solar gardens, which are taking a considerable more amount of, of revenue in. My concern is that would the, these companies continue to skirt the issue? So because it's 1-meg, we're seeing all these 1-megs going up. If, if the break was at 2-meg, we probably would see 2-meg solar gardens going up. And it's just a matter of them playing the system in order to avoid tax. And I think we need to get a handle on what's appropriate as far as taxation on these.
Ms. Benson, are you there? Or I don't know if we've got Randy or somebody else. I know we've had some conversation about that being a state issue, and it's kind of gotten brought up, mixed up with this. I, I totally understand your concern, Joe, but it, it really is a state issue. Madam Chair, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. We have had a significant number of conversations with Jeff Johnson, Property Services Director. And I know that they have been speaking with Department of Revenue regarding this issue. It has been brought up, it's been discussed, and there is considerable conversation around it. The taxation, as we know, is kind of historically what happens on a property. So as things develop, then the property taxes adjust for those things that have occurred. And I think at this point, that's kind of what we're seeing here is that once this issue gets brought up on a state level, which it now has been, that would be addressed by the legislature, and they can have that conversation and Department of Revenue. It's not a land use issue per se on the taxation. So the question becomes, for land use purposes, how do we want to see the land developed or managed, in this case, differently? If, whether it's a feedlot or a solar or a wind project, and looking to diversify the agricultural economy, is that the direction that the board wants to go? The taxation of any of those things is separate. And Department of Revenue and our Property Services Director is working closely with Department of Revenue and their group of assessors and others to address that issue. So it's been brought up, and there is no answer yet. But I know it's being talked about at this point.
Madam Chair, my concern about that approach is that those making the investment and those benefiting from the lack of paying their fair share of taxes have the best of both worlds right now. They don't, they don't want to lobby for a change, and the longer they drag that out, the more money they make. I mean, it's, 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 for, for them, it's a matter of not wanting the change. And so, you know, the legislature can argue about it and not make any changes year after year and say, well, yeah, we understand the situation. If we start saying, yeah, we need to have this change, and we don't allow them to, to use the system, again, going from, let's say, into maybe, okay, we got two, now we got three, now we got four. Pretty soon you have 10 individual 1-megs, and they're, they're producing the same as a 10-meg would be. And they're not, again, producing their, their fair share. Also, as far as the land use, we're putting these onto agricultural property. Do we necessarily have that right? In that, should we, should we not zone them into ag areas, but should we have a special zoning for solar gardens that would be different than ag? That's my concern.
Well, Lee, I don't see you. I'm on my screen right now, but that's because I'm seeing the, the, the property right now. I keep thinking about how complicated so many of these decisions are. Townships wanting certain, are willing to have certain land be zoned differently than they've originally been set up. And so partially, we've had land, we've had decisions changed about whether something is 40 acres or not, in part because of that. We now have landowners that are trying to figure out how to be diversifying their own economy. And it is, it is a complicated thing. And I, as you're, as you're talking, Joe, one of the things I'm thinking about is the landowners, and that being a different issue than what you're talking about with those companies. So when we're saying no to the landowner, because that's who we're saying no to, is the property owner, that ends up making this look a bit differently. I guess the other thing that's interesting is Congress, by way bipartisan, numbers just reinforce that they want to see more of this. And that means subsidies, just like there has been subsidies for other farming-related kinds of items, is going to continue in this. So it's partially a tax issue, which I still think we should all be encouraging general legislature to be looking at, but it is also what the priorities that are out there that are being placed.
Shelley, this is Jeff Mergen. Shelley, I'd like you to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but as I look at this, the first one was located in pretty much the wetland area of that parcel. Just in where the second one is going, it would probably be higher than the overall LISA score. And this one overall has a LISA score of 77 points something.
Correct.
Which is, I think, about the highest one that I've remembered seeing.
Mr. Chair.
For this kind of.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mergen, we have such. Previously, the first one was issued, and the LISA was a lower score because there was wetland. However, you have approved those that were higher. I believe Stamer was also a higher LISA score as well. So I know there are higher LISA scores that have existed. I think the question, if, if we're going to talk about taxation, I think there's a different issue in a zoning district. But I think the concern is, is this agricultural? This is agricultural, and it looks like this drawing is different than the one that you just had on the screen before, Angie, where it showed the solar garden to the south in the wetland. I think that's the one Commissioner Mergen was specifically, that one, was looking at. So I, I think, as you can tell, this is a farmed wetland, which means that they have been producing from that particular area. It's probably a 1-type 2 wetland, which can be farmed and is in compliance with the Wetland Conservation Act. So as those kinds of things occur, is it better to convert this? That's a good question, and those are the questions that you guys are being asked. Is this a good use? That one that was in the wetland, though, was previously approved, and the one to the right is the one that is under question at this point.
If I can just quick clarify unless Angie would like to. The, the, on the screen right now, that light blue is the wetland. There is no, there is no solar in that wetland. The, the original one that was approved is above the, and. So the original one that was approved was not in any wetland.
Okay, so that was, that looked like it was what was approved, but it wasn't. That was what actually is the wetland. So you can see that both are out of the wetland then. But the corners. But the corners, even if even if they are in some areas, it's possibly one wetland, but the to the south was wet and farmed, but that is not in. So thank you for the correction. So neither of these are in wetland.
And one other clarification, if I may. We, as developers, are not trying to skirt any of the taxes. The Excel program currently is limited to one megawatt. And if that limit used to be when the program first came out was five megawatts, that's why we built five megawatts. But we aren't building one megawatts to skirt taxes. We're only building one megawatts because that's all we're allowed to build. And I'm not sure how the taxes work in this particular county, but other counties that we've developed in, say, if this parcel is 40 acres and it's taxed ag, if 20 of it goes to solar, we have been getting tax statements where the zoning has stayed the chain stayed the same, but the use has changed on 20 acres of it, and now we're taxed on those 20 acres at a commercial use, which would be a higher rate. And I'm not sure if those other counties are doing that incorrectly or not, but we're I guess my point is, we're not trying to avoid paying any taxes.
Randy, are you able to respond to that? Are you available?
Yes.
I was just going to ask you about that.
I'll do my best here, but if it's one megawatt, if it's less than one megawatt, the underlying valuation or classification would stay the same. Now, if you have two on the same parcel, they may look at changing that classification of that property, and that would be a Jeff question. But in general, and this is statewide, it's not by county, this is statewide. If it's less than one megawatt and it's ag, it would stay ag. If it's more than one megawatt, then, right, it would change to commercial. But being there's two of them on one property, that might cause it to be classified as commercial, and that would be right, that would be a higher thing. But I don't know specifically the answer to that question. You'd have to Jeff or Jake to get that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is Jeff Johnson, Property Services.
Thank you, Jeff.
I've been, yes, I've been following the discussion, and what has been shared is is correct in regards to the question that Mr. Beisner has raised. If the entities owning each of the two one-megawatt solar farms are the same, they would be connected, and they would be paying a production tax because it would be viewed as two megawatts rather than one, we would also be reclassifying the portion of land dedicated to these solar farms as commercial. However, if they are different entities, then the department would not connect those, and we would not be permitted to treat them independent, you know, treat them collectively as one commercial site. So this matter has been brought to the attention to AMC, the Minnesota Department of Revenue. My communication that I've shared with you has been forwarded to Susan Rafferty, and I was hoping to get a response to that before this time, and I have not received a response. I do know that there's a technical bill that has been introduced, it has some provisions in it regarding solar farms, but I don't know what those particulars are, and I've asked that that information be shared with me, but at this point, I'm still awaiting information. So I hope that brief update is helpful. I do suggest that if you have some influence in the process, particularly regarding tax legislation, if you have concerns or would like to seek change, this is a matter that you probably should be discussing with AMC and Matt Hilgert.
So Mr. Johnson, in this case, I believe, what I'm hearing you say, in this property, not necessarily a different property, it would, because there'd be two megawatts, it then that area would then be deemed to be commercial. Is that correct?
It may be if.
Different entities?
If the entities are the same, yes.
Right, right. So one of the things we might want to be talking about with legislators is that it should it should go to the property, not to the entity who has them. Okay?
Correct, yes.
That's a full clarification. Joe, does that answer your question on this one, then?
It does to some extent. My my question would be, then, do you just create another entity? And so you've got Company A, and now you want to build a second one, so now you create Company B, and then to do your third one, you create Company C, and you achieve that goal by putting three different sites on one property.
So in this case, it would be the same, though. So I agree. I mean, what you're talking about seems like the fix would be is go look to the property and the land versus the companies.
Correct.
That's a technical, so I don't think anybody expected that.
Yeah. And then, Madam Chair, then, Mr. Johnson, do we presently have that in place, that if we have more than one meg solar gardens on the same property by the same entity, are have we changed that to commercial or not, or are we in the process of that, or where are we with that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, I have reviewed the record, and we do not have currently where we have two one-megawatt solar farms linked up and treated as commercial. If the entities are the same, our assessor will be instructed and understands that he must classify those properties supporting the solar gardens as commercial. This is a matter that we work closely in unison with the Department of Revenue to ensure that we're treating these properties the same, because obviously, if they're subject to taxation, we do not want them to be escaping taxation. Each late fall, early winter, we provide the Department of Revenue with the report of all the new solar farms that have come online during the past year, and they do their reference checks to make sure that they're one and the same or they're different. And based upon that interpretation, that helps us determine whether or not we should be classifying each of these two land masses as commercial or as agricultural, depending upon the ownership interest that's associated with each of the solar gardens.
And Madam Chair, could I add something here?
Yes.
Yes, Mr.
What Joe's getting at is typically what we see happen is these two, these two solar gardens probably would have separate ownership, and I guess we could ask the applicant here. But we know that some of this is happening because our actual revenue from energy production tax for solar gardens has gone down, has not gone up as we're adding some. So I think we're seeing more multiple entities than similar entities.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, Jeff Johnson, Property Services Director again. I do want to point out that the department is aware of the growth of the one-megawatt solar farms throughout Minnesota, and that this will continue because the Public Utility Commission a few years ago did acknowledge and restrict the development of these farms to one megawatt or less. And so obviously, I've shared information regarding the growth of activity in Stearns County, and clearly, the majority of solar gardens that have come online the last two years have all been one megawatt, which we have not received any tax benefits from the energy production tax, or for that matter even, a change in the local assessment regarding a commercial classification. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, if I can just add one thing, too. You know, I think sometimes we get caught up on trying to tax everything possible, but, you know, in reality, even the the property owner, you know, is obviously collecting rents, you know, and there is tax being paid by these individual landowners as well, and not necessarily to the state or to the county, but sometimes I get the feeling that everybody thinks this is they're getting a free ride, they're getting all this money, you know, for allowing this to happen, but, you know, in essence, you know, there's still tax consequences. It just doesn't come necessarily into the offers, you know, of maybe the county. I agree, I think maybe looked at the property and not so much the entities, you know, like in this case, if we got two, you know, then maybe it should be commercial, part of that property should be commercial. So that's all I have. Ready for a vote?
Okay, I was going to say, Lee, you probably say this horse is like dying or dead.
If we're ready for a vote, would you want to add? Madam Chair, just wondering.
Just real quick, Joe, Lee, did you have something you want to add?
Oh, thank you, Carol. I forgot about me.
No, I tried to forget about you.
Yeah, no, you tried, you tried, didn't work.
No, 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 never.
The what you actually have tier two is dueling agencies. You have Public Utilities Commission trying to encourage property owners to engage in one type of activity, and local and state land use regulations discouraging the same activity. So the proof ultimately is in the pudding. Sooner or later, property owners that have these types of facilities, they change ownership if for no other reason than the fact that people die, and they have to change. And if those properties sell for more than if they didn't have these facilities on the property, there's your proof. It's worth more, so it gets taxed more, and it shows up in the sales data. That's the kind of stuff Jeff Johnson studied, and when we start seeing those sales take place, he can use the entire state as his market for this, but it'll show up, and ultimately it gets caught up. And if somebody is gaining some, if someone is gaining some benefit from this, it's short term, the system does catch up with itself.
Okay, and before I get to you, Joe, Angie Berg, you had something else you wanted to add?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I just wanted to comment that should the board look at vote to approving the conditional use permit, we would ask for the board to consider raising the financial guarantee amount to $185,000 instead of $125,000, as I indicated to the board and Planning Commission at our special meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I also shared that email to the commissioners. The latest information that we're finding in our research is that that it could be as high as $185,000 per megawatt. So we, as as a department, are recommending that you do consider raising that amount.
Steve, would you consider that to be part of your motion?
Yes, I would. And the other thing I forgot, too, is we've had a couple of the others where they've allowed the fence to be off the ground, maybe a foot or so, so if the smaller wildlife can roam free, if that would be an option.
So are you including that in your motion?
Yes, but I'm not sure exactly what if there's a guideline there, but.
Okay, Ms. Berg, was there something specific to be?
Madam Chair, sure, Commissioner Commissioner Notch, we did, the DNR did not review this site because it is not within two miles of a national heritage. Basically, it's not close to any particular significant natural resource or wildlife concern, so we did not ask the DNR to review that, so I don't have a recommendation on what that chance would look like in this case. Typically, we would reserve that for cases that we that we sent to DNR based on a mapped location of a nearby site.
I was just thinking, this one had that wetland close by that, you know, and I don't know if they have a specific height that it has to be, if it's eight inches off the ground or 12 inches, obviously, you don't want everything in there, but it's been a concern in the past. And maybe that's something, too, for future consideration on all of them.
Right.
Steve, I I concern with that.
I was getting back to you.
I just want to comment on Steve's comment, Madam Chair. Steve, I I concern with you there because you do have that wetland there. And also, I believe if we start putting them into wetland, my understanding from the new information we got that that also trip might trip a tap, so that we would have them look at the quality of the wetland and how they'd like to weigh in on the placement of those panels.
Right, so that would be for a future one.
Horse is dead.
Okay. I know the horse is dead, Lee, but yet, but you're right, the system should catch up, and maybe this is the time that the system has caught up, so I'm ready for the vote.
All right. Okay, everybody else, all right. We have a motion and a second. District two.
Nay.
District three.
Nay.
District four. You're mute, characteristically mute, Lee.
Aye.
District five.
Aye.
District one, aye. All right, the motion passes. It sounds like there's a few things to come back to us with, too, to be continuing to consider. Really appreciate this conversation. I know it's gotten complicated, and we want to do it right.
I deserve a break today.
Are you saying you're ready for a break, or do you want to continue getting through? Would you like a five-minute break, Commissioner Landsmeyer?
Threshold of pain has been reached.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come back to the rest of our Environmental Services agenda. Thank you. Thank you.
While we're waiting to reconvene, I'm wondering, Shelley, Angie, if you have preference if we do the consent agendas, eight or nine at the end, or do you rather do it?
Um, if you have the battery, okay. I have, uh, four or, um, four or five.
Then let's, let's go, maybe.
I will, I'll bet.
That sounds good.
Okay. Okay.
It's a relief, bad fun. And then as soon as we see, um, Commissioner Mergen as well, that's good. But Angie, your showing is muted. Okay, well, we, it looks like we've got everybody back, so let's go.
Let's go ahead and reconvene. Um, uh, gonna turn to you, Shelley, and I want to thank the people who've been waiting so very patiently, uh, for this particular item.
Madam Chair, we have item H1, that is on packet page 156, and it is Consider A Conditionally Use Permit Application Submitted By George Myers, Myers Cozy Corner Campground in Richmond. And I do have Jennifer Buckantine to go through the issue identification information, results of that information that were sent for the public purpose. Um, we'd like to have that information. Um, and George Myers is also on the line and available, so we will go through that first and then we will move to the next section after that.
Great, thank you, Ms. Buckentine.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. This request is for, uh, the expansion at Cozy Corners Campground. Um, as you're aware, they're requesting to add 49 new sites to the campground and then also relocate 11 sites from the original campground to this new area. Both the Planning Commission and Board did do public hearings on this request. The Planning Commission recommended approval on a six to one vote. Since the Board last discussed this item in December, the proposal has been modified a bit to, in order to pull the sites a little bit further from the lake. The stormwater management plan has been updated and finalized and that's been approved. The other change, um, the other major change was that George Myers is now, um, sort of requesting a limit on the number of dock slips. If this expansion request goes, is approved, he would be allowed 257 sites and that would potentially allow 257 dock slips. His application now states that he would limit himself to 200 dock slips total. That would be 40 in this expansion and then 160 in the original area. And then he'd also have 10 dock slips for transient use and that would be like folks who boat up to eat at the restaurant. So those are the, um, highlights on the application and changes since the last meeting. Um, in your packet, we included a spreadsheet of all the public testimony that we received, both written testimony and oral testimony. And then it also included, um, this, the, uh, a summary of the 377 postcards that we received opposing the request. So the other item in the packet was the summary of the issues or concerns that were raised and then we had a response to the concerns and potential mitigating factors for many of them. One item we didn't have, uh, we were still looking into was permit compliance. It was asked if all of the decks and sheds that are out there have proper permits. So Sarah in our office has analyzed that and spent many hours on it and we know they're for sure 92% in compliance with those permits. There's 15 sites that we haven't been able to match up with a permit yet. Um, what, we're still working on that. Um, some of our permits don't have identifying information on them, they're older, so we're trying to match permits with the sites. But that's something that we will work on with George and make sure that that's all in compliance before he'd be authorized to rent out these additional sites if the permit is approved. Is there any questions on that issue's summary? That 16-page document that went through a lot of stuff, I know.
Well, and thank you for that. It was very thorough and like we all know that must have taken quite a bit of time, but I, I personally found that helpful. Are there any questions from any members?
I guess I would have a question, Jeff Mergen.
Okay, Commissioner Mergen.
I've gotten, I've gotten quite a bit of response from people feeling that they were not allowed to properly be heard in the first public hearing that we had. Is it possible to reopen that public hearing? Uh, there have been a number of requests, I know, for that.
Yeah, um, this is Jen Buckantine. Commissioner Mergen, that is an option the Board has, would be to conduct another public hearing, um, if you feel like there might be new information that they would bring forward.
Thank you.
And Jeff, I know that you've been, um, meeting with some folks. I don't know if there's anything you want to update the rest of us on. I know we appreciate that.
Well, I, I think, did you get the, uh, email from Mike Rosiski? Did everybody get that? And it was, he pretty much laid out the things where they felt they were not properly represented or disagreed with what the, uh, department's analysis was and they, they would like to respond to that. And I, I'm getting quite a bit of correspondence here and phone calls and things. So I, I guess I would like to reopen the public hearing if that is a possibility.
One crisis at a time, I got Mike's stuff.
Yeah, I did.
Yes, I, I did too, and, uh, Madam Chair, uh, and just with response to, to staff, uh, again, I, I also am very pleased with the amount of work that went into this. Uh, this is not a very easy, uh, topic to deal with considering that the pulling entities, one in one direction, one in the other. But as far as staff is concerned, is there anything new that needs to be brought up as far as that we haven't resolved? Otherwise, I'm ready to move forward.
I know there was a request made, folks, about what, what information has not been presented yet that would come up if there was an additional, or reopen public hearing and I'm not sure, believe there weren't any other information given. Is that correct or have you received anything new? Back to Commissioner Persky's question.
Madam Chair, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. As you know, and I had, um, let, I would made you aware that I did make a direct request to, um, one of the parties who has responded to us, a citizen and a, a concerned group, and asked specifically if they had any issues that were outstanding that hadn't been addressed. I think what it is, is there's a disagreement in how we've addressed the issue. So, uh, that's a decision of the Board if you would like us to hold another hearing or if you felt these have been adequately addressed. Um, this, the, the other part of this where there may be additional conversation would be related to conditions and I think Jennifer Buckantine, uh, can go through the conditions that are being proposed related to each of those issues that were identified and potential conditions, um, that would make those concerns.
Okay, let's, let's have you do that. I know, say briefly, let's, let's go ahead and, and go through those because that may be helpful, but then, um, we'll want to get a, a motion from somebody on the Board about what you'd like to do. Okay, Ms. Buckentine?
All right, thanks, Madam Chair. So the list of proposed conditions, um, here's the proposed conditions that we have and I'll paraphrase them, um, but the first condition would be to ensure the stormwater management plan is properly implemented and we collect a financial guarantee for that and we don't release that until they have an engineer sign off saying it was properly built. Um, another condition is related to vegetation management. So, um, as we know, the property they're proposing to expand on has vegetation along the shoreline. Um, the condition would state they are allowed to have a single path to access the docks, but then the rest of the vegetation within that 100-foot lake setback shall be preserved and maintained in its natural state. There would be some allowance for the trees that are five inches in diameter or more to be limbed up, uh, and obviously they would be allowed to remove, um, exotic species like buckthorn or purple loostrife. They also have a proposal to plant two trees in each RV site, so that's a minimum of 120 trees that would need to be planted. In regards to signage, the condition stating that their entrance sign has to be moved 10 feet off the road right of way. We're proposing no trespassing signs be placed along that property line with, um, that they share with Peggy Ledoux and Dale Zimmerman. And also requesting aquatic invasive species signage be placed at the boat launch, maybe, um, we're thinking similar to what you would see at a DNR boat launch. And then the last thing on signs would be putting up a sign at that 100-foot lake setback. Some of their campsites do go into that 100-foot lake setback a bit, so we're proposing a sign at that 100-foot setback, just notifying those people that, um, no vegetative removals allowed beyond that point. Regarding docks, um, the docks shall be installed according to the approved plan. In accordance with the applicant's amendment, the campground is allowed no more than 200 mooring, permanent mooring spaces and 10 transient, specifically 40 at the expansion and 60 at the, um, 160 spaces at the original dock area plus the 10 transient sites. And then regarding fencing and screening, uh, this is something, um, for the Board to discuss if the permit is approved, but our suggestion is to coincide with that original permit approval from 1979, a fence of woven wire and three strands of barbed wire be constructed along the property line abutting the Ledoux-Zimmerman parcel. The fence shall be a minimum of eight feet tall and located as shown on the attached plan. Angie's got a map up there on the screen. There is a, an area that has a current fence. Um, it is somewhat dilapidated, vegetation has grown into it and such, so that, it needs to be replaced. So what you're seeing as the yellow and green fence on that map would be required. Um, also for your consideration would be requiring a fence to wrap around the south side going east of that, um, Ledoux-Zimmerman parcel or going west to the lake to fence in the southern boundary of the campground expansion. That's something for discussion. Um, I will point out, any fence within the 100-foot lake setback is limited to four feet in height. Another item on fencing would be to have a privacy fence. We're proposing a six-foot privacy fence installed on the north side of the campground and that would be along Edgerton Road to screen those five sites from the homes to the north of Edgerton, as you see there on the map on the screen, because we did hear concerns from those neighbors to the north about lighting and, um, issues they have with those RV sites there. Okay, um, flipping to septic system, so we'd have a condition that the septic shall be installed according to the approved permit before we would allow any, um, additional license, or before we would add those new sites onto the license. The septic system design has been submitted, it's in process of being reviewed and it will, will be determining here whether that's a state permit or a county permit for that system. Uh, follow, a requirement that the project must follow the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act, a requirement that the southbound right turn lane has to be constructed on Highway 22. And then also a requirement for an alternative access road within the campground to allow another access road kind of through the campground there in the event that there was a obstruction on the main road coming in to the expansion. Uh, condition number nine, the 11 relocated sites shall be relocated within five years, which would bring us to January 5th, 2026. An approved administrative subdivision is required. They have to attach 15 acres from George's farmland, um, to the campground, so that attachment would need to be done by May 1st or before they start doing any ground disturbing activity. Uh, the owner shall comply with, obtain and comply with Minnesota DNR water appropriation permit and that's due to the, uh, the wells that are out there and the amount of people on the wells. They have, they will trigger the threshold for needing that appropriations permit. Another condition that we are asking for a site plan prepared by a surveyor for the entire resort showing all 257 sites. Um, all lighting within the resort shall meet the county zoning ordinance for lighting and then no recreational shooting is allowed on the property. And that's what I have for the proposed conditions.
Thank you.
Any conditions, are there?
We are proposing 14.
Jeff Mergen, Shelley, from our conversation yesterday morning, did you get any of those questions answered? Did you, did you find out who Ryan White was?
Um, I did ask, uh, George Meyer if he knew Ryan White and he did not recall Ryan White, so I'm unsure who Ryan White is.
I think it's, I think it's Brian.
Oh, Brian, right, Brian, no, I, when we had our, George hopefully got reconnected back to the conversation, um, so hopefully he can answer any questions that you have, um, related to that. I did also, Commissioner Mergen, you had asked me to relay the question about future expansion. I did relay that request to, um, the applicant and, uh, I think the applicant can respond to that as well. So if you wanted to go through your questions related to the conditions, as we've presented them, Mergen, that might be a good time to do that and then maybe George could respond, um, to those after, after Commissioner Mergen up his concerns.
Sounds good. Commissioner Mergen?
Yes, um, well, one other thing we talked about was, I went past there again on Edgerton Road. I don't think a six-foot fence is high enough to shield the light and help the noise situation. Uh, I would like to see that changed to an eight-foot. And what I have been told by more than one person is that the last time they expanded that it was declared that that would be their last expansion. Now, it's not in writing, but if this one passes, I'd like that, I don't know if it would be legally binding down in the future, but I'd like something at least recorded in writing that this is intended to be the last expansion. I, I don't know if that, if you would be willing to do that or not.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes.
I've got, I had a question about that too, um, but I was wondering, was that expansion under the previous owner or the current owner?
I believe the current owner. I, I'll let him answer that, but I believe it was.
Okay. Did you have other, um, items under the conditions or other questions?
No, the fencing situation, I had asked for a chain link fence there, at least six feet high with the barbed wire on top.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have any other questions about these before we go to Mr. Meyer? Because maybe he could just address them all at once.
Madam Chair, don't mean the microphone.
That's the person. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, uh, the, the discussion on the fence, I know it's a, a small item to some extent, but, but yet long range. The necessity of barbed wire on top of the fence, I guess to me, I, I'm not really... The necessity of barbed wire on top of the fence, I guess to me, I'm not really understanding why the necessity for barbed wire on top of the fence in that, in the past where I've seen barbed wire placed over a number of years, if that barbed wire comes to the ground, okay, then that becomes an issue for people or for animals especially to get tangled into it. I would think the eight-foot chain link fence is going to deter anybody from going over that fence, and if they were to take anything off that property, it would be very difficult for them to bring things over the top of an eight-foot fence. And if they were, if they were thinking of actually taking things, I guess a wire cutter's would resolve that barbed wire on top. I just don't see the necessity. We're not impounding prisoners here, I don't think, that are trying to escape anything. I'm just concerned about the barbed wire.
Okay, else? Otherwise, Mr. Myers, are you there? Mergan, do you want to go?
I didn't hear anything till the trees, something about the trees at the end there. Now, I missed the first part because I had to reconnect here. I didn't get my speakerphone back on. But regarding the fence, that's, you know, Mr. Persky said it right, what are we trying to do, keep criminals out or people out? A six-foot-high fence should be more than sufficient to keep people out, and if they're going to decide they're going in there, like you said, a wire cutter's a lot easier than jumping over a fence. I don't understand why we need more than a six-foot-high fence. I got a five-foot-high all along Highway 22 to keep kids from running out on the highway, and I've never seen a kid on the other side of that fence yet. You know, they chase balls and stuff, I put it up for that reason, and little kids not to go over there. I would think another foot higher, that'll keep the most of the kids out, other than anybody with a wire cutter, and I don't care what kind of fence you put up, unless we're going to start a prison camp here, it ain't going to keep them out. I think a six-foot-high fence is more than sufficient. I don't know what else we had here.
Okay, I think the other two things, George, were, and Jeff, you may, you may want to add to this, one was on the privacy fence to the north, making that eight feet versus six, and then there was a question about future, future expansion plans or not. Are you planning on?
I'm not planning on anything, assigning anything. What happens down the road, I sell the property and somebody else wants to do something. I can't speak for them, but I don't plan on doing anything other than this. I don't know what to tell you, I'm not going to sign that I'll never expand because I won't be here, but somebody else might want to, the land is available. When I bought that land, that was back in '07, that land was available to the public, it was on auction. Before I bought that land, I went to a comprehensive, I don't know, you guys had a comprehensive thing up, and I think it was Freeport, about the future, and that was in the future expansion. So that was the reason I bought that land, is for future growth. How would you like it if you went and spent that kind of money to buy land to grow your business, and then you can't do nothing with it? I think that's, I don't know, I don't think anybody on the chain of lakes that's against this would like to buy a piece of land to build on, and, you know, 13 years later, they can't do nothing with it. I don't think that's quite right, especially if when it was in the comprehensive plan that I looked at, I don't know unless it changed since then, but I never got notification of it. What else? Is Brian White, I don't know who he is, I don't know which neighbor he is, I don't know what to say on that. And the eight-foot-high fence along Edgerton, we're up on top of the hill already, I think a six-foot-high would be plenty, I don't think that that's going, you know, people ain't eight feet tall, so the noise, another foot higher ain't going to change much on the noise, I don't think. I'll agree to the six-foot-high fence, I think that's what the variant or the ordinance is anyway. Other than that, on the fences, that's all I got to say. Was there anything else that I didn't address?
Very much.
Was talked about?
Commissioner Mergan or anybody else, is there anything else you would like to ask George about?
It's covered the questions I asked.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you, Mr. Myers.
You're welcome.
All right, what is your preference here, members?
I'd move approval with the, as proposed with the 14 conditions.
Okay, is there a second? Can't see everybody, sorry about that, I'm looking.
Persky, I will, I will second that opening it up to discussion.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Further discussion?
Chair? Madam Chair? Can we clarify the fencing along the southern border of Mr. Meyer's property and then the, so along the, Angie just took a picture, so what we would want is clarity to the condition, if you want a six-foot chain link fence, an eight-foot chain link fence, a wire-woven fence of whatever size, any, and then, as you can see, we have the southern part of Mr. Meyer's property, and then it goes along the eastern side of his property adjacent to Ledoux, and then we have a question, is, should the fence take a right or a left, going toward the lake or up, up the hill a little bit toward the ravine? So that's really the question that would need to be answered so that we could have clarity to that condition.
Commissioner Lunsmaier?
I.
Mergan?
Clarity on the condition related to the fencing. We need the height of the fence determined, the style of the fence, either wire-woven or chain link, and then the height of the fence, and is there barbed wire or not, and then, is it at the end of that location, is it going east or is it going to go west? Those would be the three things that we, we need to, we have clarified on that particular condition.
I have no preference.
I know there was a discrepancy between the intent having barbed wire or not, so let's, we can answer that question first. Commissioner Persky had said no barbed wire, and Commissioner Mergan was, I think, in favor of barbed wire, so, you know, which direction as a condition you prefer. Mr. Meyer does not want barbed wire.
Other members?
Commissioner Persky had proposed that it be eight feet high.
Correct.
Eight feet high for all of it or just the screening?
Commissioner, I believe Commissioner Persky said eight feet on the chain link as a total, and no barbed wire on the top.
Commissioner Persky, is that what you?
That is correct.
Eight feet high, fucking A.
So they meant that for the, this other part, not for the privacy?
Correct. Fence would be the one on Edgerton Road, Madam Chair? Would be a separate, that's a different type of fencing, and that would, the question would be, is that a six-foot or an eight-foot-high request of the board as a condition?
So I've, based on what I'm seeing, I think we might be kind of all over the place on this. Is there a staff recommendation on this?
Well, either is doable, it's a zoned commercial, it would, it could allow a fence of a commercial eight-foot, or, and we have seen many six-foot fences, so again, we're not opposed to either option, but I think there was some concern about potential glare and maybe trying to buffer some of that noise.
Chair, the fence, the height of the fence require a separate motion?
Okay. So I think at this point, we, I'm hearing you say your motion was for those 14 conditions, and then we could have a separate motion once we've gotten through that, is that correct?
Go on, progress, whatever, get something done.
All right, Commissioner Notch, did you have something to?
Yeah, I, I guess, I lost my train of thought here. But I just drew a blank, but, I mean, I, six, well, we won't talk about the fence now, that can be later. Oh, I know what I was going to say, what, I guess what I would have liked to see maybe is prioritizing the issues from the past that weren't completed, and I know the fence was one of them, but I think there's a couple of other items. You know, I guess, you know, it's always, I think, the original request, I think, said he had until, what is, 12 months to correct any issues? I'm not sure if that was correct or not, but, you know, I'd like to see some of that stuff, you know, at least get done, because it's showing that, okay, I'm going to fix the past issues, and, you know, maybe some of those are fixed already, but, you know, those are some initial findings where things that didn't get completed when they were supposed to get completed. I guess I'd like to see that timeframe shortened to make sure they get done maybe ASAP. And then basically.
Yes.
I just had a, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director, had confirmation from staff that there are no outstanding past issues at this time, so those have all been corrected with the exception of the fence and making sure that the fence is done. So we're back to the fence.
That is a high priority. Okay, well, we have, and unless there are any other, anything else anybody wants to say, let's go ahead and vote. District two.
Yeah, I'm going, and I want to make just a couple comments, I don't want to drag this on too long, and that is that we did grant the public, their sec, that, that public hearing, and that was a group request that we did made, and we allowed people to have their chance to say. We've reacted to that, and now it's ready, it's time to move forward. You know, this is going to provide opportunity for people to enjoy the lakes, but I want to say I appreciate the concerns about, about the lake in general environmentally, and I encourage those people to, to continue those efforts to make that a better lake. So I'm voting, I'm in favor of the proposal.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Persky. District three.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Aye.
Okay, district four.
Aye.
District five.
Aye.
District one.
I, I have to say, my, I very much agree with a number of the concerns we've gotten that relate to the water and water use and noise, and it's very unfortunate that we do not currently seem to have any tools to address any of those, and I don't, I wish that we did, but I am going to vote aye, in part because I don't know that I have another choice on the things that I'm really most concerned about.
Okay, so the, the motion passes, now let's go back to the fencing. Is there a motion on the fencing?
Madam Chair?
I'd move a six-foot fence.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I think we've been talking about this, so unless somebody really wants to talk again, why don't we go ahead and proceed with the vote? This, yep, sorry. Oh, you need to know what direction.
Yes, my question is on, Madam Chair, that piece that says possible south fence, is that necessary? The one from the edge of, that's in yellow on the bottom, that circle, is that necessary?
Madam Chair, that's a decision of the board if you feel it's necessary at all.
When, when we were out, this is Jeff Mergan, when we were out there to look at this, it was undecided as to either go to the east with the one to the ravine to surround the Ledoux-Zimmerman property till that point, and then George brought up that it might be easier just to go from there down to the lake for him. He was the person that brought that up, so I would say it should be his choice.
Other members? Thank you, Commissioner Mergan.
And Angie was out there too, and Jennifer, they could, they could comment on that also. Chair, I heard everything correctly?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mergan, Jen Buckantine, that was the discussion. The concern was, is if we didn't bring the fence east or west, it might be easy and attractive for people to just walk around the fence into the Ledoux property, so that was the reason that that was brought up, going one way or the other.
Reluctant to require it, rather than fencing, at some point, I think plantings would be more attractive, but I want to leave that up to the option of the property owner. If they think about it in any detail, the planting would be a much more appealing visceral item, and I would think.
The issue is that there have been, there have been some concerns with vandalism that has happened on the Ledoux-Zimmerman property in the past, and that's, the idea is to eliminate that.
Hot side out of mind.
Maybe.
So it sounds really like you're not adding, you're leaving that to the owner in this particular one, why don't we vote on the height of the fencing, and if somebody wants to bring a separate motion with regard to the east-west, that's fine, otherwise, well, it'll be left to the owner. Is that a decision?
Leave it to the option of the owner. I'm really disappointed in the session today, boy, are we getting into micromanaging. Come on, folks, we don't have all the answers.
Okay, on that point, okay, the motion under consideration is six-foot and leaving whether there is additional fencing to the owner. There's a motion and a second. Okay, signify by saying aye. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four. District five.
Aye.
District one, aye. Okay, I think we are done with this one, is that correct, Steph?
If we are six-foot fences for both fences, we are done.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's probably our longest item now.
We are hoping that is the case. Madam Chair, we do have a couple of requests. Yeah, we have a couple of rezoning requests and the two items that were carried over from consent.
Okay, let's go. If you're still on there, thank you, I hope that there's continued work between you and the other property owners, that obviously can help with some resolutions. Okay, Ms. Benson?
Okay, so we are on item H2, and that is the cached rezoning, and that is packet page 194. Angie has put up the map showing the area, and Jennifer, I believe is here to talk about it, or Angie, I'm not sure.
Yes, thank you, Jen Buckantine here. So the Planning Commission did a public hearing on this rezoning request on December 17. The request is to rezone 10 acres from transitional 20 to agricultural 40. This would be the 10 acres that's outlined in yellow on the screen, and the Planning Commission recommended approval to the county board with the findings of fact, which are listed out in your packet there. So with that, we would ask the board to either concur with the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt ordinance 614, or you could choose to hold your own public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion, thank you. Commissioner Notch, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second, thank you, Jeff. Any other discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and move to a vote, we'll be much, this one, all in favor, signify by saying aye. District two.
Since this is just rezoning, I'll vote aye.
Okay, I do think it's important that we're remembering that while we might want to, like, listen to each other, which is great, this is something that we will be applying in the future to other properties, so. District three.
Aye.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
District five.
Aye.
District one, aye. All right, thank you. Next, next.
The next item is item H3. This is a rezoning request submitted by USS Great River Solar on behalf of Meadowbrook Dairy Farm of Sartell. So the, again, this is another request to rezone 8.49 acres, this one from residential 10 to agricultural 40. The Planning Commission did a public hearing on this December 17th. This one, they voted six to one to recommend denial of the rezoning request. The findings are included in your packet there. So we would ask the board to either concur with the Planning Commission and deny it, or you have the option of setting your own public hearing to consider it. And I believe we have representatives from USS Great River Solar, in case you would have any questions for them.
Heard from one person who'd like it pulled and put for a public hearing. I don't know if people want to get, take questions right now, if you want to go to our own public hearing, what your preference is.
I guess I, this is Commissioner Notch, I would like to have our own public hearing, just because I do have some questions even relates to the one we just approved.
Do you like to make that one?
Sure.
Is there a second? Okay. So Mergen, thank you, Jeff. There's been a motion and a second to hold our own public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
Four.
Oh.
District five.
Aye.
District one, aye. Okay, Steph, you'll be setting up a public hearing for us?
Yes, Madam Chair, and that we anticipate would be on February 2nd.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate the people who asked the questions, I've heard you to come back for the public hearing. All right, next item.
Okay, the next item is item H4, another rezoning request. This one submitted by Scott and Amanda Rugemer of Painesville on behalf of Kayla and Jordan Block of Cold Spring. This request is to rezone five acres from agricultural 40 to residential 5. And the Planning Commission voted five to two to recommend approval of the rezoning. Their findings of fact are in your packet. So we would ask the board to concur with the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt ordinance number 616. Or if you don't concur, you could set your own public hearing.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move Commissioner Notch.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
A second, Mergen.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. All right, seeing we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Okay, otherwise we'll move to our vote. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
I couldn't understand you, sorry, say that one more time.
No, 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 no.
There we go, thank you, all right. District five.
Aye.
District one, aye. All right, we've got two outstanding items from the consent agenda. Number eight, number nine.
Madam Chair, that would be, right, item E8, which is the Henches Vacation Home Rental Request. And there were requests by others to hold your own public hearing on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, which was to approve.
Okay, members, what would you like to do?
I would like, I would move to hold our own public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
I, I will second that, I think that there's enough outline issues on this one to warrant a separate hearing.
Okay, we are gonna go through our little roll call again, sorry about that, but we'll do it quickly, come, district two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye, no.
District five.
Aye.
District five. I think we will just, no, 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 just kidding. Okay, number nine, the interim use permit application.
Madam Chair, so a vacation home rental, that was approved, the recommendation was to approve, and there was no outstanding questions. Commissioner Notch had asked for that to be pulled because it was a vacation home rental as well, I believe.
Mr. Notch.
And I maybe pulled it just for a comment, kind of tying in with number eight, which is kind of the same thing. And maybe it's just for clarification, maybe we need to do something down the road here a little bit? You know, is there maybe something we're missing with the details of what should be required with some of these vacation rentals? Noticing that some of these are requiring 30-year, 20-year, you know, should we, and this can be a further discussion, but I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, maybe at some point in the future. But, you know, should we be doing maybe five years at a time with a two-year review just to make sure there aren't any issues? I mean, I'm sure they'd come to the board if staff is getting complaints, issues and whatnot all, but I just want to make sure, are we really looking at the big picture, making sure we're not missing something when we either approve these or don't approve? That is just what I, the comment that I wanted to make on these.
I actually was in a very similar place, I had the same, the same kind of questions.
Commissioner-
What do you want to do for this one? All right, Commissioner Persky.
First of all, yes, the Planning Commission is in, in that thinking mode too, we don't want to be all over the place, similarly to the gravel pits in the mining, that we'd like to be a little bit more consistent with our number of years of operation. So, yeah, we'd like to somehow establish a standard, okay?
Mr. Lenzmeyer.
This, my questions would probably be best addressed by Jeff Johnson, who's next in the batting order.
Jeff, are you available for a question?
Madam Chair, yes, I'm available.
Thank you.
How many years before you catch up on this rental stuff? Obviously, in a situation where somebody lives there, how often does the non-homestead classification catch up with, in a situation like that? I mean, some of these are homesteaded property.
Right. Madam Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, each year is a new assessment year, and we work collaboratively with the Environmental Services Department regarding permitting, and we do follow up on each of the individual properties regarding their particular uses. Every five years, we do field canvassing and internal inspections, and so we catch properties during those activities, there are some use changes. Typically, the law, as it's been amended recently, says this, that if the property is homesteaded, and there is a vacation rental use associated with that property, the property will remain homesteaded. The recent change in law specifies a certain period of time, I believe it's 14 days of consecutive use over a number of months, where the property will fall into what's referred to as the 4B classification, be taxed at a rate of 1.25%, which is similar to the non-homestead classification. And in those instances, that's where the property has no owner-occupied use. So we developed a brochure last year, we'll have to update that brochure for the next assessment cycle. But clearly, it is something that's on our radar, we've been monitoring and following very carefully over the last few years, and I think we've got a fairly good handle on many, not all, because these properties are fluid, they do change use. Some by, through the permitting process, we capture, others just through the field canvassing activities.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else, or do we have a motion? Do you want to go ahead and vote on this now, or do you want to do a public hearing?
Madam Chair, just in response to Commissioner Lenzmeyer's question, and this has been something on the Planning Commission as well, is that it's almost we're looking at two different types of vacation home rental. Those that actually are being used by the family or by the individual and are occasionally renting it out, let's say, six to eight times during the summer perhaps, or something like that. Or the other end where it is not being used by the family at all, and 52 weeks out of the year, it's actually being rented out. And there seems to be a conflict of which those types of views, and far as the appropriateness then of, of what we're doing with them. So, just, that's a concern of the Planning Commission's as well.
Okay, and so what's your will here? You want to?
How long did the Planning Commission approve this one for?
Ms. Berg, or?
Madam Chair, the, this one on Elkview Road, they recommended 10 years.
Madam Chair, if, well, I'll make a motion to approve it, but I would like to see a review in five years.
Okay, is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that, and with that five-year review, I don't know if it was recognized by the other commissioners, we go from a drive that's public to a private drive across with an easement. There was question about emergency services being able to get down there. I, I would hope that, that should just be confirmed by the township that an emergency vehicle can get down there. And I would concur, so I'm making, I'm seconding that for five years, Commissioner Notch.
So wait, are we approving it for 10 with the review at five, or are we, is the motion to do it for five?
That's a good question. I've seen on the list, there are some that are five, and I don't know, and maybe staff can answer that, if they're just up for a review in five years, or they have to reissue them in a five-year period? Because there's others on that list.
Yeah, yeah, Madam Chair, I can speak to that. So, the ones, the date that's on that list is their expiration date. So after, if they expire in five years, they're done unless they come back and apply for another interim use permit?
Okay, then I would like to have it just approved for five years, at least it will have a good, a good look back.
And Commissioner Persky?
That's my, I'll second that.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second, let's go ahead and vote. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
District five.
Aye.
District one, aye. Okay, I think we got through environmental services, we're kind of getting to the home stretch, where's everybody at? Do you need another, we've scheduled a break, but we obviously-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Shelley Benson, Environmental Services, we did have one additional question for you.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, go ahead.
Yep, Angie, I'm gonna let you ask the question.
Ms. Berg?
We keep getting in and out. That was related specifically to holding a public hearing on the amendments for, for the land use changes in shoreland, and wanting to know if we can set our public hearing for February 16. A yes for Angie, she's, that's, so we wanted to make those changes, and if you wanted to do any potential solar, or did you want to do solar separate, this would be just a public hearing at the board, since the Planning Commission has weighed in on the shoreline review information already, and we would like to move that forward so that we have it for the construction season.
So is, is your question then, are we just doing shoreline at that point, or would we, as a separate item, also do solar at that point?
Right, do we want it separate, or do both solar and shoreline, because we talked about doing solar changes?
Okay, board members? They're looking for some evidence?
I'll, I'll move, just do the shoreline for now.
Okay, is there anybody else comfortable with that? Do we need a vote on that, or I've seen heads nodding, or, no?
So we'll just set a public hearing.
Lee, what were you gonna say? Lee, you are shaking your head, is there something you wanted to add?
Oh, I, I think this is an appropriate decision that we don't have to be involved in.
Okay, we will bring a public-
I think eventually we have to actually do the ordinance though, right? So, okay. So there's a motion to do, do this on the, did you say the 16th?
Yeah, February 16th is the date we're looking for.
That's, that's my anniversary, so make sure we have a very fun board meeting that day, okay?
We'll do our best.
So, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. All right, we have a motion and a second, we'll go ahead and vote on that. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four. You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. District five.
Aye.
District one, aye. Okay, thank you. Any more questions or items?
Madam Chair, that's everything, thank you very much.
Okay. Members, do you want to keep moving along, or do you want, do you need another break? Want another break?
I'm okay with keeping, keeping-
All right, let's keep moving. I was gonna say, I'm not, if you, if you need a change, you can let me know. All right, property services. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Your next agenda item is item I1, located on packet page 288. It's my request that the county board appoint a special board to act as the county board of utilization for the 2021 assessment. This board will address all value and classification appeals related to this year's assessment, and it proposes that you continue to follow the past practice that we have administered, and that is to approve five members to serve on the special board for a term of one year with compensation set at $100 plus expenses for mileage and parking for each meeting. At this time, I'd like to submit the names of the following individuals for your review and consideration. There are four applicants who have served on this special board in the past, and the people that I'm proposing that you approve are Stephen Hanson, he's a Realtor, Thomas Klein, appraiser, William Malter, a Realtor, Tom Ruland, an appraiser. We also have a fifth applicant, her name is Jackie Atkinson, she's a Realtor who's been working in the central Minnesota area for about 18 years. She's also a former business owner in the Freeport area for 39 years. She's been active in her community as a youth leader and participated on various church and school committees, and has recently served on some boards at a local bank and nursing home. I think her knowledge and experience are excellent qualities that would serve this board well. And so what I'm proposing is that you would approve the appointments of each of these five applicants to the special board for the current year's assessment.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll concur with making that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Notch, second?
I'll second, Mergen.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Mergen. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to voting. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
District five.
Aye.
District one, aye. Thank you, thank you so much, Jeff.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And please thank them, it's a lot of, that's a lot of work.
Will do, thank you.
All right, administration, Dr. Williams.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm having technical difficulties too, I had to switch on to my laptop.
That's fitting.
My desktop is just sitting here and spinning, so, anyway. Yes, you have three items under the administration, I think the first one is, is pretty simple, just to clarify, we didn't have this on your annual appointments, but you can have there in, in front of you what- but you can have there in front of you what AMC Policy Committee boards you all will serve on. As you can see, we have Environmental, Natural Resources, Commissioner Natch, General Government, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Health and Human Services, Commissioner Clark, Public Safety, Commissioner Persky, and Transportation, Commissioner Mergen. And I just want to make sure that's where you want to be on committees this year. If that's where you want to be, we'll submit that to AMC.
Okay, do we need a formal vote on that? Everybody good?
I'm fine with mine.
I am too. Good work.
Okay, good, thank you. The second one is, is the business relief program that has been funded by the state. And as you know, there's, the state is planning on making a direct payment to a number of businesses that qualify under what's been laid out in the statute, and that would go to breweries, wineries, distilleries, fitness and recreation centers, bowling centers, especially foods business, bars and restaurants that show a 30% reduction in revenues. And then the Department of Economic Development, Climate and Economic Development will make some to kind of event centers and those kinds of things. And then counties were provided with dollars to create a program to disseminate funds to businesses that are hurting and businesses that are in need. And we have about 3.1 million, not quite 3.1 million dollars to distribute. And so we designed a program that's somewhat similar to the CARES Act program, but to meet the legislative intent, we've, it's somewhat different. And so what we're suggesting here with the proposed program is the priority will be given to those businesses that have been impacted by the executive order, but are not receiving those direct payments from the state. So we will, you know, be able to catch, as the legislative intent was, to catch those businesses that maybe weren't forced to close but are still impacted by the peacetime emergency executive orders. And we're also leaving this a little bit open. I mean, we're going to, we're suggesting that the limit will be $15,000, but we're asking businesses to really tell us what their need is. So we get that even if it's greater than or less than 15,000. We can be a little bit subjective in how we administer this because we really don't know the amount of requests that we're going to get. If we have dollars left over, then we would create a second round where we would open, open that funding back up to those that might have even received that direct payment. And I think the way we fashion this is pretty well in keeping with the legislative intent. We have correspondence from our delegation that really said, remember, there's businesses that are, that are being impacted dramatically that aren't necessarily closed. But, and we've had inquiries from, from everything, from pet boarding to, you know, bus transportation, to small event centers, all those kinds of things that weren't maybe technically closed, but are losing a significant amount of business because of the emergency. So that's why you see this as, is a little different than the CARES Act, and of course, because the state is providing direct payment to those businesses. Now those businesses that are, that are, meet that 30% threshold on the state list, we don't really know when they're going to get a check. We were told at one point that it could be next week, and that's when we've suggested that we start our program is next Monday, to allow applications to begin next Monday. Well, and we'll monitor this as we go along and see how, you know, the dollars are going out, and if we need to make changes, we'll be able to react to that. So I know it's not, it's, I think we've laid out a good program that can meet the legislative intent. And so that's proposed for your approval, and I'm certainly, I'm happy to answer questions. And I know we have Randy and Sarah here as well. This was drafted by the same committee that created the CARES Act program. So it was myself and Randy and Sarah and Shelley and Neil Fortier with the HRA. Neil has, will again administer the program for all businesses that are outside the city of St. Cloud. And the St. Cloud EDA has agreed to administer the, at least take the applications and make recommendations back to us for any, any businesses that are located in the city of St. Cloud. There's a little bit of money in the bill that will, that we can pay the entities that do the administration as well. It's set aside, but I think Sarah can, Randy can correct me, but I think it's in the neighborhood of $70,000.
That's correct.
Randy or Sarah, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I think you covered it pretty well. There's, of course, other programs going on, but do you seem to be funding the biggest gaps that are out there?
Part of our process, of course, will be to ask these applicants if they've received other funding as well. Unfortunately, we're not going to know the state. The state is unwilling to tell us who's getting these direct grants, so we'll just have to rely on a certification from the businesses on whether or not they receive that funding.
I will add too that we did receive our funds from the state this morning, so we do have the funds in our coffers to get started. And I think we were hoping to have our applications live on the website starting on Monday, January 11th, if that's correct, Mike?
Yes.
That is good news. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Questions or comments or clarifications be needed? Who would be the contact person?
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, if you're speaking about a business that wants to connect with somebody, I think the HRA would be the best now because he'll be administering the program once the board approves this. Any of us are happy to take a call, but if they're outside the city of St. Cloud, the best, most direct contact would be to Neil with the HRA or to the St. Cloud EDA, because they're going to process the applications. The applications will be available on the website, so it'll be a portal just very similar to what we did with the CARES Act. They can go online, fill out the forms, submit what we're asking them to submit, and electronically submit everything.
So who is the St. Cloud EDA if it's in St. Cloud?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Who, who with the city of St. Cloud, if it's St. Cloud?
Yeah, Kathy Mahalich is the director, and then Tammy Campion also works in that office, and she'll be processing applications as well.
Right. Steve?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, yeah, it's glad, I'm glad to see that, you know, something like this has come up because I have had some business owners, you know, they don't necessarily meet that threshold of 30%. They're close to it. They're having all kinds of issues. So hopefully, we can maybe fill some gaps in there too.
Anybody else? I've heard the same thing too. And I really appreciate the effort that went into this, trying to figure out the gaps and how are we being able to utilize these tools to make a difference, I think, well, for, there really isn't a way to fix it. And I guess there's a train coming by here, so I'm going to back on mute. Unless, did we have a motion?
Got a motion.
Thank you, Lee.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Natch? Okay, anything else? All right. District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District one, aye. Great, thank you for that. It'll be good to see what comes in, and we will be getting that information out in those raves ways like you did last time, right? I know there were some, there were some entities that were maybe, even though I know there was a lot of good outreach, didn't quite realize what was available. So I appreciate those continued efforts. And obviously, we can help with that too. All right, I think there's one more item.
Yep, and I think the train has passed, so... Yeah, the last item is really along the same vein as to try to provide some relief and help to establishments that have been most severely impacted by the executive orders. And so what's being suggested here is that the county refund the food and beverage and lodging license fees for the coming year. They were really due December 1st, and we were hearing from these businesses. It's pretty tough times for them. And so that's the suggestion here. And the cost of that would be, as you can see in the package, $211,000. And then if we do that, and if the board wants to do that today, they could. But if you want to not charge the liquor license fees that are due in July, that would be another $35,000. The funding for this would really come from fund balance, but as you recall, we were able to retain some CARES funding that didn't get directly spent in like this. And it's also why we were a little careful with the 2021 budget as we approached it, because we felt like we probably have some needs like this. So anyway, the cost, total cost, and if you do both, would be the neighborhood of $246,000, and it would come from fund balance.
I would think that would be the proper thing to do. So therefore, I will move that forward.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, great. So the motion is to do both. Right. Excellent, okay. Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll move to voting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Persky?
I do think it's a good idea. Mike, as far as people coming back online then with operations, are we going to excuse it or the tax then as far as the number of months that they miss? So let's say they don't come on until July again, so then the first six months would be dismissed? But if they can come back on, let's say in May or in March, that they would come on, how are we going to actually do that as far as the tax?
My motion was for 2021.
Yeah, this would...
Commissioner? Here?
Yes.
Okay.
And the liquor licenses would be for next year's fees, I believe, right? Or are we talking this year?
Yes, next, that is due in July of '21.
Yep, okay.
And we did, Randy, you can help, but we did give a break to these license holders in 2020 as well.
We did, we did three and a half months of credit towards this year's license.
So this will, this will allow those businesses to, businesses to know and be able to plan that they're not going to have that fee expenditure come June.
Yes. Okay, all right. I'm good with it.
It seems like it's one thing we can... All right, district two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District one. And members, it sounds like Ms. Benson has one more clarification for us. Unless, Dr. Williams, you've got something else we need to do first? Okay, Shelley?
Okay, in our review of the request to amend the vacation home rental to a five-year period versus a 10-year period, typically when we do something more restrictive, we do hold a public hearing to make that change so that the applicant is aware of making the change from the 10-year period to the five-year period. So if that's okay with you, we will go back and hold public hearing as your standard practice, if that is okay with the board.
I've actually been wondering about that. It's a pretty significant, it's like, do you need us to vote on that again? Our members look like they're amenable to that.
If there's consensus on holding a public hearing, we will, we will do that public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. Madam Chair, as I made the motion before, I'll agree to that.
Shelley, could we also do what Steve said to probably have just a review after two years? Can we put that in there also?
Let's have that conversation with the public hearing.
Public hearing. And maybe while that comes, we'll have two properties. We can hopefully figure that out.
That would be one.
We can combine that with the flyovers.
There you go. And yes, Lee, I think your points to us about, let's not get too much of the weeds, balanced with how are we making sure this is all working? Okay. So, yes, I think that's, okay, then we're good? Ms. Benson? Okay. All right. We are at issues by Commissioner. Joe, do you have any?
I do not have any, other than wishing everybody on the board here and staff a Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to working with everybody this year. As far as cooperation and everything, I know at today's meeting, I've had better days in the dental chair, but anyway, I'm looking forward to a good new year.
Given, one of the people on this meeting got to be in the dental chair yesterday. Dr. Williams, I don't know if you would concur or not. Jeff, any particular?
I do not.
Okay. Lee?
Thank you.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, I just kind of want to go back a little bit to the cozy corners. Just as a comment, you know, staff put together that nice chart with the headings and the individual names. To me, this is a good point to consider for maybe even all lake associations to kind of this, and look at your membership and say, are we helping to, you know, avoid some of these issues that we're concerned with this campground expansion? Because I think this chart with the headings on the top should make everybody more aware, you know, especially lake property owners, because, you know, there are enough impaired lakes in Minnesota, that maybe, you know, they can sit down with their membership and say, are we doing our part? You know, just, that's just a comment I had after I seen that chart, and you look at the headings on there, I think, and it may be not just lake shore, it can be farmers, residential, you know, are we all really doing, you know, our part to be good neighbors? That's all I had. Thanks.
That's a great point. So maybe both the lake association and maybe even as it relates to townships might make some sense. That's, yes, since a lot of...
Talking about the united front on the, on the application on the campground, it sounds like a facetious comment, but absolutely mean it. To put, the folks put that kind of energy into a lake association or some sort of volunteer organization to better the situation for all properties, I'd be much more in favor of listening to this stuff than just get all fired up over one issue and then they go away. I think it's a wasted opportunity otherwise, and I don't know how to encourage that.
Yeah. Well, maybe that is one of the things, go back to what you just brought up, Steve, that it's a scent, and the board wants to make sure that they're aware of these, because a lot of the concerns we all heard were things that were placed under, as our ordinances or the laws are currently set up, there's not a lot we could do right now. But they together could come back and say, this is how we want to be operating.
Yeah, maybe environmental services can maybe just peel this off, and maybe future discussions can look at some of these headings and, I don't know, just be more, you know, so everybody's more aware.
Yeah, that's great. I just wanted to thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, for your, your work this past year as chair, your however many years of being chair. And also thank you for our moment of silence for Senator Rolf. He worked really hard to be working with all of us at our county. Did a great job on a number, worked really particularly hard on mental health-related issues, and he's going to be missed. So thank you for that. And otherwise, Happy New Year, and I really do hope somewhere along the way that we're going to be able to get to see each other together in person. Otherwise, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.